And certainly, after Hurricane Charlie, I personally have a personal experience with a good friend who was saved because of radio communications when there were no other way to communicate with emergency services. And his life was saved as a result of that. So, thank you guys for all being there and doing that. It's an invaluable service to the community. I think we need to not be onerous and heavy-handed with an ordinance. I do not want to see anything in there about setbacks. I do not want to see anything in there about FCC approval and all this other stuff. I think it's way too cumbersome. I want to keep it simple. Personally, I would just as soon see something like they register with the city and tell us how high their antenna is. I mean, we don't really need more than that. If people are willing to register with the city, and maybe even just a very inexpensive permit application to do that, I don't think we need more than that. And by doing that, then the police and fire also know who is registered in the city limits. And then they have a way to communicate with them, and maybe even get together as a group periodically and communicate with each other and share information. I think that might be a better direction to go. I think this is totally overkill, and it's totally just way beyond what we should be doing, and we definitely don't need another ordinance. That's my opinion on it.
Gary?
Okay. So, to sum up what Lynn said is we need the KISS principle, and we can spell it with one S or two. Whether we want to be stupid or not, we can put an extra S on it. I'm getting the sense is that there isn't a soul up here, or a ham operator here, that doesn't want to see us to go forward in a logical way. I have a technical question. There may be somebody in the audience, maybe Ron or somebody, that can answer it. But on the setback issue, we may have, it may be engineeringally self-limiting anyway. What seemed to me is after you get up to a certain height, you're not going to have a freestanding structure, but you're going to have some kind of guy wires and so forth. And that's going to be required to allow it to collapse on itself. So, at some point, I get a yes and a no. So, that's okay. That's why I'm asking the question. It would seem to me, from an engineering standpoint, as you go up, you're going to need a little bit more wire, guy wire, and that's going to also dictate, from an engineering, physics standpoint, a certain amount of setback. Unless you want to count a little silly piano wire, there wouldn't be that.
Okay, you have basic-
Say your name again.
I'm sorry. Ron Farley, KG4QIV, Punta Gorda Isles. With regards to tower structures, there's generally two tower types: self-supporting, which means that you build all the infrastructure basically in the concrete or the footer, and then go up, and it's designed and engineered as each section to support the most weight at the bottom, and then it parallels. The other one is a guide system, and you're right. Generally, the real high towers are guides, and they have to go at a certain angle and a certain slope, and you've got to have footers and stuff. I didn't want to give a dissertation, but I'm a fire and safety engineer. I've worked as a loss control rep for an insurance company, so I've surveyed commercial towers, and I know about building ordinances, ocean fire codes. And you do need, you know, codes. They help, they give us guidance. But we've got to make sure that we can comply and meet those. But, anyway, the towers that we buy have engineering specifications, and they specify exactly what the footers are. And when I did my tower, I went to the building office and provided that engineered-scale drawing that specified the size of the holes, the size of the rebar, the amount of concrete. And each tower, based on the size, has a different-sized hole.
Yours is in the side yard?
Yes, it's in the side yard. And as the new ordinance is proposed, I cannot meet that. I can meet the four-foot setback because of the eve of the house. Mine has to have the concrete footer, and then up at the ees, I have dual attachments that are tied into all the ledger boards up there.
But even with or without the guy wire, they are designed, the way you described, to collapse in and of themselves. But these are open structures that are not going to be very vulnerable to high winds because it's going to go right through.
Right. They're generally tubular, and most of them are triangle form. And most of it is open so that the air can go through and light and all of that. It's just a rib system. I can't even think of any towers that I've ever seen commercially or amateur that are solid.
Thank you. Nancy?
No, I think we're okay.
We've closed the public hearing.
I'm the only one that cares.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, I was just wondering, in the case of a storm, when they have the collapsible ones, obviously, somebody's going to collapse their antenna and not going to be leaving it up, the retractable.
We, sorry, we can't take the comments from the audience, but we'll get you back up there if we need you.
I'm in agreement with what I'm hearing in this discussion, that we need to keep this really simple. And it's not onerous. It allows us to support the program as opposed to seemingly put things in the way. However, we need to do that.
Maybe we just change the height restriction on the towers and cut the rest of this onerous language out of the ordinance.
I have a suggestion, based on what appears to be the consensus. If you look at the second page of the proposed ordinance, under Roman numeral one, this is the proposed, this is actually the language of the ordinance as it presently exists that would be modified by this ordinance. So, let's work off of the language of the current ordinance that presently exists. So, we'll start off by reading, "The height of habitable buildings and components is controlled by the building type and height limitations listed in Articles 3 and 5." Then, this new ordinance would have included the language that's underlined. I would take that out altogether. And then it would say, "These limitations do not apply to spires, belfries, cupolas, antennas, water tanks, fire towers, ventilators, chimneys, or to other appurtenances usually located above the roof line, and not intended for human occupancy, provided such structures do not exceed the height limitations by 20 percent." I would include, and then it goes on, "These limitations do not apply to airport control towers, provided that the heights of those structures shall not exceed height limitations prescribed by the Federal Aviation Agency or airport zoning regulations within the flight approach zone of airports." I would then include in there, "These limitations do not apply," and correct me if I'm wrong in the language here, but it would say, "These limitations do not apply to FCC-licensed," excuse me, "to towers and/or antenna facilitating the operation of FCC-licensed amateur radio operators," whatever the right language would be, period. And then the rest of that, that's stricken, would remain stricken, and that has to do with the waiver. So that it would allow for the antenna, irrespective of height, for antennas serving FCC-licensed amateur radio operators.
Because right underneath there, you have amateur operator means the person named in an amateur operator slash primary license station granted by the Federal Communications Commission.
Yeah, I can actually use that definition in the language that I just mentioned, and that would be the end of it.
That would be good. And then delete all the other stuff.
Everything else comes out.
And that puts no height limit whatsoever, then.
Mm-hmm. And from what we heard, there's some that have a seven-foot concrete base. I mean, if that happens, we have no protection for the neighbor, or we'd just be taking our chance on that one, I guess. Gary?
I just want to just make a comment. I want to thank David. I want to thank all the ham operators that come here today. It seems to me that we're, by having this spirited discussion, and forcing this spirited discussion, that we're coming to a reasonable, with one S spelled KISS, solution.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to just make that comment. I think we're going in the right direction. So, thank you all.
I'll throw one other comment. I also feel that this entire community of ham radio operators in general are very upstanding folks who are there for the right reason, and they're trying to be helpful and provide a good community service. And I think we have to take that into account, that we have to give them the benefit of the doubt that they're going to be responsible with their antennas and what they put in their yards, and respectful of their neighbors as well. So, you know, I give them, I give them a lot of credit because it's a very valuable service that I think is something we absolutely have to keep in our community, so.
We're all in agreement on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I will also make this opinion from up here.
Okay.
That because we are substantially shrinking the scope of the ordinance, and what we're proposing to do now would legitimately be considered as within the scope of the title of the ordinance, we can make that change, bring it back to its second reading, so that it doesn't have to go through the process again.
I mean, I almost wanted to go back to planning, in my mind, because there are still issues that could be unresolved with this. So, that would be my pleasure, but.
My understanding from the couple of folks that I spoke with from planning is that they had an objection to the overreach of all the different restrictions that were put in the ordinance. I think if we simplified things and made it what we've all talked about and agreed upon, I think they would pretty much be okay with it.
I wouldn't speak for them, but that's just me. Gary?
I'm inclined to agree with Rachel, only because that also gives the public, in this case, our ham operators, an additional chance to help us dot the i's and cross the t's and keep that last s off. So, I think it would be a good idea to send it back if I get some yeses out there. Yeah, I, okay. I think that would be a good idea.
I would also agree in that it gives us the opportunity to take a look and say, "In our desire to simplify, that we may have overlooked one item."
Yeah.
Like, we do need to have a building, you know, there may need to be a permit of some sort. You know, just to make sure-
Well, yeah, from what they said, if they're going to pour, from what your comments too, if the setback's seven-and-a-half foot, and there's the house, if they're going to pour a seven-foot slab, seven-foot by seven-foot slab, next to somebody's yard, I think if I did that for any reason to my neighbor, they wouldn't be happy with me.
I agree.
So, I think we need another look at this and make sure we're not putting something out there that could have very unintended consequences. But I do like the licensure. I think that definitely needs to be included in there. And I think you're right. For the most part, if we have that in there, that they have to be the licensed amateur operator, that is one qualification that's going to trigger this. But I think we need to really think about the other aspects and make sure that we're not oversimplifying it.
Well, you've raised, you've raised a hypothetical that is a legitimate hypothetical that would not be addressed by this ordinance and might create a problem. That is, without a setback associated with a structure, associated with an antenna, that seven-by-seven-foot concrete slab would be permissible.
In a yard. So, I would like to see it go back to planning.
I totally agree with that. The more you talked about it, the more it made sense.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay. So, do we need to do any kind of vote?
Yes.
Okay. We need a motion, then, to-
I move we set it back to planning.
With the changes that were-
So, the appropriate motion would be not to approve this ordinance at first reading.
Okay.
I move that we do not approve this ordinance, whatever the number is.
Z809-18.
At the first reading.
Yes, second.
We have a motion, second, to not approve this ordinance at the first reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Now, do we need a motion to move it back to planning?
No, we got, we have your direction.
Okay.
I mean, because what you raised is that seven feet, we may say, okay, you can only build it so much on the side.
We're asking the input, the experts that give us input.
Yes.
More opportunity for input.
Give the planning commission some more work to do. Okay, we do not have a quasi-judicial public hearing. We do not have any second readings or ordinance resolutions. We're moving on to the consent agenda. I think we have some people that may want to leave. Okay, we'll just take a second.
Darn. What? I can't imagine them wanting to leave.
To be continued.
Hi, guys. Thank you, Ron.
Here we go.
It's got grass on top of it.
Got it.
We actually figured that out. I figured that out, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have an item they'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
No.
No.
No? Okay. Citizens' comments on consent agenda items, which would be the City Clerk's Department approval of minutes, Legal Department, two invoices, Finance Department, an agreement, and a request of a waiver. Then there is a CHNEP item under Urban Design, and the Police Department has a JAG program grant. Citizens' comments on consent agenda items, now. Anybody want to speak on consent? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we move into the regular agenda. So, this is now the time for citizens' comments on basically the rest of the agenda. So, if you'd like to speak on the Bethel St. Mark Funding Initiative, the approval of the purchase agreement of the funds for the mitigation credits for the Buckley's Pass, the appropriation of funds for Phase II sewer master planning project, and the agreement to marine-grade ready-mixed concrete, the new agreement for that. And then, under unfinished business, we have FEMA Coastal Risk Map Study Project Update. We have the waterfront master plan presentation. We have the Gilchrist Park Waterfront Activity Center draft request for proposal. And then at 1:00, we're going to hear the selection committee for the citywide master plan firm selection, which will probably at 1:00 open that up again for citizens' comment on that one item. But if you want to speak to that right now, too, you can. And those are the remaining items. The drone technology has been moved to, hopefully, the next agenda. So, citizens' comments on regular agenda items. Please take the podium. You have three minutes.
My name is Sheri Lenora, and I'm representing Smart Growth Punta Gorda. When I received today's agenda, I was very surprised to see an item called Request for a Proposal for the Gilchrist Waterfront Activity Center. And I was surprised for several reasons. First, I don't, sometimes don't hear, seem to hear the same things at the city council meeting that the city hears. At the March 16 meeting, I heard Councilman Person Matthews call for the waterfront activity center study to be included in the citywide master plan. I heard Councilperson Cummings and Mayor Keisling disagree and call for a separate study. I heard Councilperson Wine, and I'm referencing now directly from the minutes, quote, "Counter that the vision for the city should be considered holistically," end quote, clarified the consultant retained for the citizens' master plan should be made aware of the waterfront activity center and should incorporate existing projects into the plan. I did not specifically hear Councilman Praffy's opinion. So, it appears to me that there was not a consensus reached by the council to call for a separate RFP, quote, going out for the Gilchrist Waterfront Activity Center. So, I'm questioning why precious staff time and dollars were directed toward this effort. Second, why would we separate the waterfront from the citywide master plan? Our waterfront is key to what makes Punta Gorda what it is. Our waterfront is our greatest asset. Gilchrist Park is a beloved park, and our citizens have many heartfelt opinions on its design and use. Any vision for Punta Gorda must include a vision for Gilchrist Park and the waterfront activity center. To separate it out would jeopardize a unified vision and possibly culminate in competing and divisive projects. One of the missions of the citizens' revisit to the citywide master plan, I hope, is to unite the community and allow us to speak in a one-strong voice for what Punta Gorda is. Finally, one-
Partners, the Blanchard House Museum on Virginia Avenue, East Virginia Avenue. We have to make some necessary repairs to the building. We've applied for funds to be able to do that. We work with contractors we have existing relationships with, but we have a lot of public who come through, and the Blanchard House Museum is one of the foundational pieces of the forming of this community itself, and a treasure to our community. So, we're hoping we can be able to make these repairs with your help, because we are currently using existing reserve funds that are needed for other building maintenance as well. So, any help you could give us would be really wonderful. But we think this is not just a small community event. This is an entire city resource and treasure that we have, and we'd love you to support it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Melody Washington, and I represent First Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church. We have submitted a permit, I'm sorry, we have submitted an application for the funding that you're offering for the St. Mark Bethel area. In doing so, we have a food program that serves the city of Punta Gorda, but also Charlotte County. On every Tuesday, we have partnered with Harry Chapin, and every Tuesday, we offer food. We're the only ones in Punta Gorda that have fresh produce, and you would not believe how many people are in need of food. We service the seniors, the homeless, disabled, anyone that is in need of food. We start at 10:30 in the morning, and believe it or not, the lines make up starting at 8:00 in the morning to get in line for food. We also serve the community with a hot meals program, and that's three days a week that we serve the community, again, the seniors, the homeless, whoever is in need of a hot meal. I also sit on the board for the anti-hunger program for Charlotte County and Al County. You may not know, is in need of help in this area, because there are a lot of people need food. And working, the working class, we call them working poor, they even have jobs, but they can't make ends meet with the additional help of food. So, I'm here to answer any questions when it comes up, in reference to the application that we have submitted. And we hope we have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Regular agenda items. Seeing none, we will move into the regular agenda. First, we have the Bethel St. Mark 2018-2019 Funding Initiative.
Thank you very much. David Hilston, Urban Design. The request that is coming for you is the second-year funding of four which, or for the Bethel St. Mark Historic Neighborhood Initiative, which consists of six new funding applications and three carryover applications, or projects, excuse me. The three carryover projects include second-year funding agreement for the Agripreneur Fresh Market in Garden in the amount of $9,050, the task-to-infrastructure analysis at $29,160, and Cooper Street Recreation Center water fountain at $1,000. New funding applications include the Gulf Shore Opera at $5,000, First Macedonia Macedonia Baptist Food Program at $8,797, new operation Cooper Street St. Mark Desserts at $10,400, Blanchard House Museum rear porch entry at $1,000, Blanchard House Museum ceiling repair at $750, and the Blanchard House Museum roof repair at $460. Staff has concerns with the new operation Cooper Street St. Mark Dessert application. The concern being, excuse me, the level of participation at 65 people per meeting. We felt that that was a little bit high, and that we may be encumbering too much money at that point that wouldn't be used. So, what we're recommending, having gone back and looked, in the staff report, it says recommending $1,250. We feel that we can go to $3,750 and fund three of the meals. So, with that, do you want to just make sure everybody knows is that the encumbered funds, from the three carryovers, need to be separated as a total at, what did we have there? $9,086.
So, David, I have a question about the Agripreneur Garden. Aren't they supposed to bring in some income when they get up and running? Is that-
That's the overall intent, yes.
So, when is that supposed to be happening?
For the record, Jean-Lebau Urban Design, I have been in touch with the agripreneurial representative, and they are looking to open within the next month or so. There's some final things that need to be done as far as the weeding and the preparation of the beds. They are working on it, and they are scheduled to do that work this weekend. And as soon as that is completed, staff will be working with them to get the last of the soil in place, make sure the drainage on the area is corrected, and move forward with it. They're looking, hopefully, by the end of, I believe, November, to open up the facility.
So, how are we, how are we divvying out those funds to that group? Is it a lump sum, or are we paying for-
We are working with them in, as they need the funding, because right now, they have nothing in their coffers. So, we have $5,000 set aside for the initial cost, and staff has been meeting with them, obtaining the materials that they need through our P-card system, and then withdrawing that from that account so that their funds, that $5,000 is being used to purchase their initial equipment. Once they get up and operational, there should be availability. It'll be a reimbursement program as they purchase the products that they need, or any supplies that they need. They'll submit a reimbursement form. We will reimburse them out of that $5,000. And it is only for three years. Once that three years is over, they will be on their own and should be up and operational.
Okay, so, go back and explain this. The carryover from the 1718 is $9,000?
Yes. It includes the $5,000 from the second funding phase, and the $4,000 remain, or whatever's remaining from the first year. The initial startup costs were not completely used as of yet because the garden isn't open.
Okay.
I have a question. When, I don't know what we're calling the group that's taking-
Simply Fresh?
Simply Fresh. When did Simply Fresh begin to work in the garden?
When we started planter, the planter boxes. We have been working with them periodically. They've been trying to get in there and weed and maintain. They're prepping the, you'll notice there's a shed in the back. They've been obtaining the equipment. They've been, you know, getting that ready and just setting up their logistics internally.
Yeah, because when I drove by, I noticed a huge amount of weeds in the beds, and I'm concerned about that. And I know from my experience with the other community gardens that we really don't want the weeds to take over, because then when the weed seeds get in the soil, and then it's just a mess.
Right. And my understanding is, if I'm not mistaken, we do have somebody from the gardens with us today, but they are scheduled to begin that work to remove all of that this weekend.
Okay, okay.
For the record, Reverend Olson Haddock, I'm with the Tripey Woods United Association, and we're basically in charge of Simply Fresh, well, not Simply Fresh, but we're the people who are working with Simply Fresh. And I have pictures from two days ago where the weeds have been removed. As a matter of fact, I went out and put out weed block so that, in between the beds, so that, you know, those weeds will be kept down. And I just read the report that the shell that's out there, you can use that as, to help keep weeds down between the beds.
That and the mulch application. They'll be, they're going to try two ways to see which works better.
Okay. And it may require a solarization process next summer, just because-
As part of the function of the garden, correct.
As part of the function. That'll help kill the weed seeds that may be in there, so.
Yeah, we haven't completed the amount of equipment that we need to get everything operational. It's, our understanding, it hasn't really been turned over to us, but we're trying to stay ahead of the game.
We're working with them to do that. We still have one final thing to do with the drainage, to make sure that that's properly in place. That was a concern of the members of the garden. So, prior to turning it over to them completely, we are still working with them to finish up that.
Wish them the best.
Yes.
The reason why you're getting some of these questions on the Simply Fresh probably comes from me. I'm out there throughout the city quite a bit, almost daily, and the progress has been somewhat slow. So, we want it to pick up, because the season for planting is coming very soon, and we want this to succeed.
It's here. It's here. I'm a master gardener. It's here. Definitely here. So are the snowbirds.
So, what, so when I'm reading this agenda, I'm just a little confused. So what, so when I'm reading this agenda, I'm just a little confused of what we're recommending and what we're not. Do we have enough to cover all of the requests or do we need to pare it down?
We need to pare it down. We have enough for the, everyone except for the St. Mark Desserts and that's just based on a recommendation from their level of participation that they're pointing out, 65. We have enough as it stands for three meals or three months' worth of meals. If they went to a, every other month, I think by the time we got to the last meal, there would be no funding left just based on the attendance. So that's what we would recommend to staff. All of the projects be funded at those levels and the dessert program be funded at $3,750.
Because she did state that there would be four, four meals. So you're thinking that they would have enough to do all four meals with that level of funding?
Believe so.
Okay. Okay. Nancy?
I've been kind of having, I may be making some unpopular comments here, but I, I understand why we decided to do this and our, because we, we discontinued using the CBDG funds and those federal funds supported projects like this. And maybe it's because of my involvement in the community for so many years. I looked at some of these and I'm thinking, well, Blanchard House is a 501(c)(3) organization and this is a perfect, a perfect request to the Charlotte Community Foundation for funds to help on a project because they support 501(c)(3) organizations. I think the Gulf Shore Opera probably is the same and, you know, those kinds of, they're always looking for new projects and I know that they're looking to expand the, what they're doing in the community. So I'm looking at some of these, I know that the church is not a 501(c)(3), so they would, and certainly food is an important thing. So I'm, you know, looking at some of these and I'm thinking, and I think the, isn't New Operation Cooper Street a 501(c)(3) that could apply for these kinds of funds as well? So I'm, you know, from my conversations with, you know, people involved with the Charlotte Community Foundation, they really want to increase the amount of grants that they're giving in the community. And, and I'm thinking, this is a perfect thing, is there a way that we can work with them? Because I'm thinking about in the bigger picture, we're no longer getting those CBG funds, we're using our own funds and we have a lot of other things that we want to do in the, that, the area where it comes to lighting and sidewalks and, and other kinds of things that we've already identified.
The infrastructure analysis is in there.
I understand, I understand, but I'm, but we're going to need to pay for whatever we want to do. And so I'm looking at some of these and thinking, isn't there a way that we could perhaps even help facilitate some discussion where we could seek out other funds from?
Grant funds.
Grant funds to cover some of these needs that are definitely important. I'm not discontin, I'm not, not denying that the requests aren't important, it's just looking at our overall budget and where we're headed and trying to figure out.
In this year too, excuse me, David Hilston, Urban Design, in this year too, we didn't want to inhibit the application process per se. The infrastructure analysis was going on. I think we've had a realization or of having listened to you that once that infrastructure analysis is done, most of these funds would probably go to those improvements that are called out. So in this first year, we just, we scattered it to everybody. I mean, we got a Gulf Shore Opera. I mean, that's unbelievable. So we just didn't want to inhibit anything.
And last year, I mean, we committed to doing this as well. We said we weren't going to do the CBG funds. We were also not going to have to pay for administration of it and so we committed to this. I mean, we can't like undo our commitment. This, we did commit. I mean, like David's saying, once we know infrastructure needs, then of course funds will go towards that from the future.
I think we need to reserve it for that.
But we committed to this and we told the community this. We can't change our mind now after committing to this last year.
And I think too, like what Nancy's saying and what Jahah said, make sure that the groups know that it's a year-to-year funding because I know we did the Simply Fresh for a three-year program, but really we need to do it year by year so they're not dependent on a renewal of a grant or start something that they can't finish. The other thing I want to talk to Ms. Washington about the food program, I did attend one of the task, Hunger Task Force meetings, if you want to come up here, and one of their biggest needs is the food programs outside of the, of traditional times for the working class families. So either in the evening or I don't know if the morning, I mean, working families have a lot to do in the morning to get to work and get their kids to school, but in the evening and the afternoon time, because I hear you saying you're giving away the food at 10:30, which is great that you have a line of people, but you're excluding a group of people, the working class group, that can't get there at 10:30 in the morning. So if you could really be cognizant of that and talk to Harry Chapin, because I know they're doing things that are out of the box, like with those trucks that they have and that whatnot, I think we could service more people in that vein.
Yes. And if I can address that, Harry Chapin and there's a church in Port Charlotte actually have a food pantry that's open 24/7. It's a model right now, we're trying to see how that works. It requires a tremendous amount of volunteers and, but, you know, we're looking at that because that is a segment of a population that is desperately in need of food. So, yes, we will take that in consideration.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just another concern is, and I don't mean to be picking on the Blanchard House Museum, but we don't, we do not own that building. We've got other historic buildings in this community that are in dire need as well. So now that we're going to start to help, you know, provide support for buildings that we don't own, it's setting precedent.
Go ahead.
Mike Ford again from the Community Development Corporation. The Blanchard House Museum is, serves the entire United States. We have visitors from Texas, from Washington, from Portland, so are we to apply for funds from those states as well or go out to other? This is, this is a Charlotte community, but a Punta Gorda city entity and a treasure for our city. Reason why we applied is because we were invited to because they thought it was, it was an urban development issue that was important for the city. We run a really class act there because we, we don't know exactly how many visitors we're going to have, but we are being sponsored by, not sponsored, but encouraged by Visit Florida on their website and their, their information that they hand out. I had a gentleman from Texas who travels all over the country taking pictures of historical buildings and museums specifically. He made the comment that this is the best-run museum and the best visible museum that he's ever been in his life. We had a student from Florida Southwest that came to do a, that came to visit us to do a historic project for his history class and he was so impressed, he said, "I've never seen anything this well represented and this well presented." So for a small museum in a small city in the state of Florida, we do some of the best jobs of anywhere in the state and in the country for other museums.
I'm not arguing with that. And I'm, I'm involved in a history, the Punta Gorda History Center, I'm on their board and I'm all, I totally support, I just, you know, it's, you're a separate 501(c)(3) organization and, and so it's, you know, that's, as is the Punta Gorda Historical Society and they need hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, that's why our appropriation is really small compared to that.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
So it's, that's where, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'd just like to, you know, say, we can't be arbitrary with this. I see what you're saying about precedent, but the Chamber just came to us for relief on their local business tax and we, we listened to that and we amended that, you know, to help them out. So it's, things come to the table and we have to do our best to make the best decision for the greater community.
Oh, I don't disagree that we do that, totally.
We do, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And we've already committed to this. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment about the Charlotte County Community Foundation. I do agree with you that that is the perfect place to seek nonprofit funding and Gulf Shore Opera has applied two years in a row and never received any funding at all. Again, we've been in the community for four years doing full-scale opera productions, concerts, and an enrichment program. I've had to take operational funds out to support that program in Charlotte County. The city is specifically looking for projects to help improve a historic district and we believe in partnership with an existing nonprofit after-school organization that this will be good for the city and that's why we are applying to the city for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
I move for approval with, with the adjustment that David made for the food, I mean, for the dessert program.
Okay.
Is that adjustment for one?
For, for, for three, he said for $3,750.
You just made a dessert.
And Joan LeBeau again, Urban Design, the money that would be left over if there, if it is not attended by the 65 residents and for that event, that that additional money be used and carried on for a fourth or a fifth dinner?
Dinner, dinner.
If it's appropriate.
Yes. Okay, nice. Okay.
Can we, before we move forward with the motion, can we talk about this, the gift part of the request on the, on the one, on the one request?
It was staff, correct.
Staff suggested that we not include the gift portion of that request.
Correct.
So do you want to specify your motion for the funding for the food, for the dinners?
Yes, I'll specify my motion for the food, yes.
And I would like to make sure that in subsequent years, I mean, we begin the conversation with the Charlotte Community Foundation, perhaps we can help work with them and facilitate so that we can help, help secure funds or help with, with these programs.
I mean, all these organizations actually go to all the community foundation offices. I mean, this is not, not like they don't know they're there. This is part of the process. This exists and we committed to this.
I understand, but they have, they have their grant process and they have a process to go through.
Yeah.
And, and so it may be that some of the organizations may not have been able to do it or this case, you know, it wasn't.
It wasn't approved for two years.
It wasn't approved, so it's, you know.
Does everybody know about the community foundation grant funding? Okay.
So we can, you know.
So we have a motion?
A second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, Reverend.
An aye?
I, I said an aye, but I think that we need to make sure that we're really, in subsequent years, are really seeking out other opportunity.
One final thing before you move on. Yes. The items that are in your packet that are available, that are, were suggested for purchase, the city would like to make sure it's all right to use their procurement process to see if we can obtain them at a reduced cost for the program?
Yes. We have consensus on that? Yes. Okay. So next we have approval of the purchase agreement and appropriation of funds for the purchase of the mitigation credits for the Buckley's Pass.
For our permit that was recently been approved, we need to allocate and appropriate the money of $90,000 to pay for the Little Pine Island Mitigation Bank. The only reason we've given you two sources is that previously we took loans out from the special use fund. I understand city council doesn't want to use the use fund anymore, so what you have in front of you, if you want to put it on the chart, we've given you a, kind of like a tally sheet of where our funds stand, the special use fund and general fund reserves. If you take it from general fund reserves, that's where we're, where would we be at? But we do need to appropriate the money and pay the Little Pine Island Mitigation Bank so we can keep this project moving forward. So you need to decide what reserve you want to take it from. We are now getting to the point where we will be looking at, especially after the next council meeting, because at the next council meeting, we finally have a proposal in from Hans Wilson to complete all of the design and go through all of the inspection services all the way up through certification and we will be bringing that amendment to the contract before you. So that pretty much finishes all the way through the final of the project. So we're going to have to borrow money for that as well and we will be looking at whether these, these reserves are the appropriate use until we can get that assessment process underway. The way it stands now is that we will be doing an intent to assess, which is a resolution in December. And when we finally fine-tune the number of water access units with our legal counsel and when Hans Wilson gives us a more updated estimate as to what the total project costs are going to be, our goal is to send out tentative assessments before we have the assessment hearing and that will probably take, we want to do that if we, if we're going to assess folks at the next tax bill. We have to have an assessment hearing, probably the first meeting in April. People will still be around, Easter is not till the end of April, so that's a good time to have a, an assessment hearing, setting up the assessment district. And in order to get all that accomplished, we need to keep this project moving forward because city council has stated to keep this project moving forward and that's what we intend to do.
Is there any change in that vein?
No, I would agree that it should come from the general fund and not from the special use fund. We, we said it, the last time we discussed the special, the special use fund, that we really only felt at this point in time that the Ponce Park construction and whatever the citizens, citywide master plan ended up being were the only two uses at this point in time that we agreed with. That was what my memory was.
Correct.
And so I think this needs to go to the general use.
This is just a loan now.
Yes, I understand. No, I understand. It's just that because it is a loan, you know, I'm really trying to protect, my view is to protect that special use fund as much as possible.
I would totally agree with that and I would be adamantly opposed to using money from that fund. And the minute we start digging into that fund and drilling away at it, it's going to burn a hole in somebody's pocket and it's going to be gone before we know it. I think we need to be very fiscally prudent on that particular pocket of money, so I would recommend the general fund as well.
But we're all in favor of moving the project forward or is there any hesitation or, you know?
No, no. In fact, I would like to just state on the record, I have had a number of people emailing me and calling me about the, the actual project itself and wanting to be assured that the project is still moving forward. There is chatter on social media, the delightful people on social media who are talking about the fact that certain people want to see a vote happen, a citizen vote. We, we need to be very clear about this, that there is not going to be a citizen vote to the best of my knowledge. And if anybody has a different opinion about that at this day, I'd like to know because I'm answering questions to people saying that there is not going to be another vote on this. It's already been decided and we, we do want to move this project forward, we want to get it to happen in the not-too-distant future. So with the goal of maybe a year and a half to two years out, that maybe the channel will actually be operable, that, that really needed to be stated on the record because there's so many people that are questioning what's going on because of some of the comments being made on social media. So I'm, I'm all for keeping it.
So you're not in favor of stopping and taking a poll?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
No, I think we need to keep it going forward. We've gotten this far, this is as far as it's ever gotten since 20 years I've lived here. I want to see this go forward. I absolutely want to see this go forward and, and I would make a motion that we use the money from the general fund to, to do the mitigation credit purchase.
Second.
Can we discuss if, if the assessment's not complete, I mean, we need a timeframe for this money to be paid back. That's the only, my only hesitation.
We are, again, your, the motion was to use the general fund as a loan.
As a loan, yes.
As a loan, as a loan.
Don't everybody get all excited about that?
You want me to clarify my motion?
We will be contacting our financial advisor, our finance director will be, and coming up with a game plan that we will bring back to you on how we're going to pay for construction ahead of the dollars for the assessment coming in. So we will bring that back to you.
Is it possible though, at that point, to wrap all this into one, whatever that strategy may be?
Oh, the loans will be repaid into a financing mechanism.
Yes. Okay, so all of it?
Yes.
So this is a temporary loan until the actual big deal loan is established?
Correct, because right now we didn't have a revenue.
Because right now, we didn't have a revenue source.
Right, okay.
It'll all come back.
It's similar to what we've done in Burnstour Isles with our canal dredging project that we had. It was, there was a loan taken out for that, that we're paying back, so.
So basically, from my perspective, it really doesn't matter where we take the money. Because these are short-term loans. And then once the financing mechanism is going to go in, whether we take it from the General Fund or whether we take it from the Special Use Fund, it's going to be reimbursed upon completion of that financing package. Is that correct?
Yeah, because the assessment.